Good morning. I will now reconvene the San Diego County Board of Supervisors meeting for the land use legislative session. Ryan, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Remer. Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Montgomery Stapp, Supervisor Desmond, and Vice Chair Lawson Remer.
Here. Okay, thank you. We now turn to County Council for the report of actions taken in closed session yesterday.
Good morning. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session on January 7, 2025, from 12:18 PM to 2:02 PM. All four supervisors were present. The Board took the following reportable action. On item J, the Board authorized County Council to initiate litigation. Particulars about the litigation will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry after the litigation has formally commenced. End of report.
Thank you. We now proceed to non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at yesterday's general legislative session or today's land use legislative session, but not both sessions. If you spoke at yesterday's general legislative session during non-agenda public comment, you will not be able to speak again today. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, any discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given a one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. If you choose not to leave, we will stop the meeting, and the sheriff's deputies will remove you, and once you're removed, we will resume the meeting. Reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are not English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments, which is four minutes. According to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp, feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. To better facilitate the meeting, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers via phone, and the rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Ryan, can you call the speakers?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Remer. We have nine total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, one individual in person, and eight requests to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite forward Robert Girman. You'll have two minutes to address the Board.
That went sideways. What? Oh, it's going. I tried to present this at the last time I was here under non-agenda item, and it is called Plane Pass. It's vector airport systems. Ninety-five airports are using it. If you read the first paragraph on the slide, it says one of the objectives is transparency, which County of Sandy Airport's Department definitely needs. This attitude, if you're not a pilot, you do not need to know what's happening at your airport. Simply doesn't fly, pun intended. And you can read this, and I have contacted the lady, spoke with her several times, and she's more than interested in working with County of San Diego airports. And this is going sideways. And my next slide is also what they monitor. You need good, hard data, unbiased data, to make a decision about airports. I recommend that you work with the Director of County Airports and investigate this and see if it's applicable with our airport system. Santa Monica uses it. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak via phone again and again. In accordance with the Board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And again, I'd like to remind the callers they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hey, Gambler here. How you guys doing? A fine and lovely day. Well, according to you guys, election fraud does not happen at all, but at the same time, I could find like four cases where people use registration cards to gain access to people's ballots and vote for them. I have been asking for the past three years to take a look at the signatures in the homeless facilities that got you guys elected. You guys blocked me, have the registrar voters file restraining order, and then you stopped a Board of Supervisors meeting halfway through, take a half an hour break, just to have me thrown in jail. To say that did not happen is bullshit. You guys are blocking, you guys are covering up election fraud. I want you to look at the signatures in homeless facilities for nuisance elections, and then all the signatures that look the same, take a look at the registration forms that come from it, and you will find the people that are committing mass amounts of voter fraud. I need you to stop covering it up before you go to jail. Do you understand that? 18501 is a law that will put your asses in jail. You already, it is already proven the fact that you guys are blocking me from looking into voter fraud. You have stopped me from almost every single question I have, and you don't even answer them legitimately. Then you throw out a video that contradicts every single answer that you give me, which I don't know which one is true. Are you looking at the envelopes, or are you not looking at the envelopes? Do you not think that anyone commits voter fraud through the election registration process or the vote by mail? Do you think people cannot open up an envelope without carrying the seal, switch out the contents, and put a new one in there? You guys don't give a shit about our election system. That's why you gave all our fire equipment to Ukraine up in L.A. and let their house...
Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning. This is Peggy Walker. January is substance use disorder treatment month. It's a good time to evaluate county drug policies because one of our county's most serious public health issues is the harmful impact of high potency THD use on the physical and mental well-being of our young people. The devastating impacts include high rates of youth marijuana-related ER and hospital admissions, and treatment for marijuana-related addiction and malhealth issues. In line with this, I call your attention to a new statewide assessment of local jurisdictions cannabis policies. This points to San Diego County policy failures to protect youth from marijuana's harm. The report is from Getting It Right From the Start, a statewide organization that advances public health and cannabis policy. The report used scientific research to evaluate the extent to which best practices were adopted to protect youth and reduce problem cannabis use. It gave San Diego County a paltry 29 points out of a possible 100 for protective policies. The report showed San Diego County has failed to enact best practices such as banning flavored products for combustion or inhalation, banning cannabis-infused beverages, banning products, marketing, and packaging attractive to youth, prohibiting billboards, and unsubstantiated therapeutic or health claims, and finally, limiting high potency products. Such policies have been enacted in other jurisdictions. I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's understanding of these public health issues, and for this reason, I support him as our new Board Chair. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello. My name is Rusty Shackelford, D3 resident. I'm here to discuss the Artesian horse that's owned by Craig Netwig and Deborah Barclay. I saw the county's own photos of their horses with many lacerations and emaciation to the point of horses with rib bones exposed. What a shame. What a disgrace. Why are only some animal cruelty cases prosecuted and not others? Those horses need to be immediately seized and transported to a rescue ranch. Please stop protecting the wealthy connected abusers when animal cruelty cases are at an all-time high in San Diego County. I've been watching these meetings for a few months, and it's atrocious what I've witnessed. Where are the speakers we usually hear during non-agenda public comment? Is this the censorship by Supervisor Tara Lawson Remer that everyone's been talking about? I'm all for inclusivity, but how did a full-blown communist suddenly become the Chair of the Board? I heard that her listening session yesterday was disgusting, patronizing, and a waste of everyone's time. I'm going to ask the sheriff to promptly arrest Tara as soon as possible so this county can get back to a normal track. From what I've read, Tara's got a long history of arrests. Please rescue the horses and protect the people of this county. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Audrey Reynolds. You've heard from me before regarding the debacle that is the Department of Animal Services. Kelly Campbell and her band of idiots did a great job at leaving innocent and neglected animals at the hands of their abuser. Interim Director Steve Luhon was compassionate and efficient. He understood the importance of listening to and working with community partners. It was purely by working with the community that he was able to bring charges against a woman whose dogs were terrorizing the neighborhood for years. I ask that you would hire someone qualified who would enforce the humane law, hold animal abusers accountable, and shut down hoarders. While no one listened, you hired a buffoon, Vaughn Maurice, who doesn't even know how to conduct an investigation. He's an embarrassment, a disgrace. He refused to communicate with community partners even when they are crucial to a case. He has lied, and he has botched a major cruelty investigation. One I handed him on a silver platter told him everything he needed to know, and he blew it. He failed to communicate with his community partner, decided to act alone, to do his own thing, which was the wrong thing. Hence, his actions and those of his incompetent officers are perpetuating animal cruelty instead of ending it.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Remer not seeing any other callers calling in this morning. That ends the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the consent calendar. This is item number one. All items on the consent agenda are routine and are to be acted upon with one motion. So the way this works is individuals can comment on consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items that they'd like for discussion or make any comments that they have on each item. So first, I'll turn to my colleagues. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have any comments on the items on the consent agenda? Supervisor Anderson?
No, this time. Thank you for your answer.
Supervisor Montgomery Stapp?
Thank you. Don't want to pull the item, and I will move the consent agenda.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Nothing to pull or comment on. I'll second the motion for...
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stapp and a second by Supervisor Desmond. We now turn to public comment. As a reminder for the speakers, please make sure that your comments pertain only to the items on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Remer. We have eight total requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, one individual in person, and seven requests to speak by phone. For any individuals that have requested to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite forward Cesar Javier. You'll have two minutes to address the Board.
Cesar Javier. She's substitute teacher. Respectfully, I say no. No to this item. Yesterday, today, Environment Quality Act guided and governed us, and we are surviving, approaching to the unwanted limit. We are destroying us as we politicize a dangerous game of exemption. SICA is not only our local, state, federal, but natural law, a mandate that is to ensure decent home, suitable environment ecology, which means by microscope, clean air, clean water, clean land surface. Hear me, hear us. This is a lifetime guidance for the sake of human and the thing. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Gambler. Well, I don't think any of you guys should go ahead and approve or disprove anything because each one of you guys committed election fraud or is committing election fraud as we speak by blocking me. That being said, you guys should be thrown in jail. Like, here's the thing. All these projects that you're doing, these $10 million project, after the contract is up, all the low-income housing, are they just going to kick them out like they've done multiple times before? And then what about the money that is owed on that? Oh, that's a wash? The people pay for that. And then they could go ahead and charge whatever they want for the buildings after those contracts are up. So basically, you're just money laundering in this group, right? Oh, shoot, I can't think of your name. I'm sorry, Alvara. That's what I wanted to talk to you about a long time ago. I never sent you the emails and all that stuff because I'm too busy working on the election fraud issue that allows them to go ahead and money launder all the money you've crossed. I know that the election fraud and you're just doing your job, and if they approve it, you can't stop it. But at the same time, giving our money to these big companies and having a place where people to stay for, let's just say, 10 years, and then they get kicked out on the street, and then there's someone else, another group of Board of Supervisors problem, which they have to go ahead and tear out more houses, build new contracts for another 10 years until finally, there is no more room, and then we just start rebuilding those 15-minute projects. Is that how this is going to continue working in California and San Diego? I mean, people can't build shit because you don't want individuals to build it. You want corporates. You sold California to corporates. You gave all our fire equipment to Ukraine so that...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello, this is Catherine Rose, and I was calling today for the SR-125 freeway. First, the, from the clerk's office, I did go over things with an email with somebody to try to get the periodic financial report, and that homeless report, I still don't have it. But for the periodic financial report, in October, in the ARCA fund, there's still $198 million. And I don't have the exact amount of debt owed for the 125 by Sandeg for the bonds, but I think it's like $150 million. Then they have about $50 million ready to go to service the debt, and so they need kind of like $100 million. And as of October last year, you had $198 million in the ARCA fund. So my request to you is to look to see if you guys could pay off all the bonds for the ARCA fund, and then that way, to Sandeg, and then that way, nobody has to pay tolls anymore, and they could kick out all those borrowers and not have to pay money for upgrades to something that should be taken out anyway. I forgot how much they're going to pay, like $20 million or something to upgrade everything. And so I think that's a better use of your money to just pay off the bond and get rid of, get rid of the tolls on the SR-125 for everybody in the name of justice. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hey, weirdos. It's Truth. Item two, reducing speed limits in Rancho San Jose, Fairbank, French, and Escondido, despite the fact that reducing speed limits does not save lives. If someone gets hit by a car at 35 miles per hour versus 40 miles per hour, they're still going to be injured or dead. Speed limits aren't even recognized without enforcement.
Truth, I'm going to pause your time. You're speaking on item two. Item two's a discussion item. The only item on the consent agenda is item one. Unmuting you and restarting your time.
Okay. Item one. Give me a second here. I'm going to look up the agenda because I don't even know what item one said, so give me a second. It'll just take a second to research what nonsense you guys have been up to, especially when you flip things around and I don't listen to the meeting because it's quite frankly boring and you censor too many people. So hold on just a second. I'm looking up item one, State Route 125. There's so much to say about that because you're paying a couple of hundred thousand, I believe it was, to have maintenance. Is that going to include homeless sweeps of the encampments? Is that going to address Sandeg scam, complete scams that have been going on where they can't even operate one toll, yet they want tolls on every single highway? That unrealistic delusion, psychosis, aka disconnection from reality, is Tara going to show up to Sandeg and pretend to be the savior and fix all of this, all of these issues on the 125? Does she know anything about maintenance to be voting on this? She doesn't need to, right? There's experts, right? Hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of experts. What's your solution for the people that get displaced from not being, from being kicked out under the highway, for example? What's the solutions for the fires that keep happening? So this is really easy. You don't have to know too much because there's so many scandals that happen within this county. It's very easy to discuss all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Yeah, it's interesting because, you know, we do need roads to get around and it's people's, you know, freedom to travel, but you guys try and impede on that in every opportunity that you get because there's been so much corruption with SR125 and overcharging customers and, you know, the firing of an employee who was bringing it forward, leading to litigation and costing the county more money. So, you know, you guys shouldn't be even having this be a toll road. You know, it should be paid off and, but your plan and the plan of the state is to get people out of their cars and charge them out of their cars. So, every road is going to be something where we have to pay to use it. And when there's already fraud going on, fraud motivates fraud, so it's like, you know, it just continues. And like I said, you know, we do need like roads to travel to, but you shouldn't be charging people, you know, extra because the system is corrupted and then, you know, firing people because they're exposing the fraud, you know, and then, you know, charging us more just to maintain the road. I mean, it's like any chance and opportunity that you guys get or Sandeg gets or, you know, the cities get, you're charging the people more and more and more money, and we don't really have anything to show for it. It's not like, oh my gosh, everything is getting so gray. It's like everything is falling apart and we just get charged more, and then, you know, you're taking away, you know, more opportunities for people to travel by means of doing that because, you know, it's like half these people live where they're being told and, you know, it's like who wants to live in a place where you're going to have to pay extra money just to go home? I mean, so it's like, you know, just even for you, maybe you guys should be the ones that are paying to have it fixed, you know what I mean? I feel like once it comes out of your guys' pockets, then you'll start to understand and get a grasp of like what it's...
Thank you. Your time is up. And Vice Chair Lawson Reemer, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Step and a second by Supervisor Jim Desmond. Ryan, please call the vote.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reemer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. So, we now move to our discussion items, which today includes items two, three, and four. We will begin with discussion item two, the Traffic Advisory Committee and Related SECA Exemption. We'll begin with public comment, so, yeah, please, Ryan, if you can call public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reemer. We have nine total requests to speak, one individual in person, eight requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite forward Caesar Javier. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Caesar Javier, it is a venerable virtue, culture, that repetition is learning, teaching, teaching, learning. I self-volunteered as a community volunteer to attend meetings after meetings, and I am acquainted with this Sandeg mission, solutions from diverse ideas, culture, if only to come up the right thing, the pathway, moral pathway, for an efficient and effective implementation of these ruling ordinances. I am just respectfully to say that, that this is no, because it is not presented. What ordinance is this? Please. It only says the ordinance dated January 29, 2025, second reading of what? Please, by few words, tell us what is this ordinance all about? Please, we need to be honest and a little bit wise, a little wise for moral sake. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Like to remind the callers, again, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
It is interesting that there is no community support attachment for items 4A and 5A like the rest of items, and then the absence of community comments. I'm unsure whether the community in fact provided input on this and the group with recommendations 3A and 3B or just planning group. There are no reasons based on individual roads and circumstances that I can say to support a tiny five mile per hour change, and as I often remarked, lowering the speed limit by five miles per hour will make little difference. So, who will enforce these? I'm sure the police have better things to do, though who benefits? Big time maker? And you're already in the deficit for the budget year and I heard for the next three or five budget years. So, I mean, why do this? Please reconsider. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hey, it's Truth back again. Item two, so first I want to recognize that I exhibited the same behavior that Tara exhibits every meeting, every time someone speaks tough. Next, repeating my point, reducing speed limits in Rancho San Jose, Fairbank Ranch in Escondido, despite the fact that reducing speed limits does not save lives because, as I said, if someone gets hit by a car at 35 miles per hour versus 40, you could even go as low as 15 if you want, they're still going to be injured or dead because speed limits aren't even recognized without enforcement, which means law enforcement. And since you supervisors back in 2020 and beyond made unlawful demands of law enforcement to get those deadly clot shots, we still have a reduced number of officers available to enforce anything at all. And according to text messages now made public, some of Tara's and Monica's friends, like Todd Gloria, Marty Von Wilpert, and Jen Campbell, knew that was going to be the effect of those demands, and they didn't care. Yes, I found those text messages. See, I do a lot of digging on my off time, even about, even when referencing items like this about speed limits, that, that type of stuff comes into play. And I also have to ask, was practically the entire consent calendar made into discussion items in order to make it seem like this is a regular meeting if you just make it a little bit longer, by having everything be a discussion item? That feels like a scam, kind of, it's just kind of more disrespect when we're addressing items such as this, which should actually be in consent. But still, this does relate to Sandeg as people were mentioning because the agenda is to get people to stop driving, and that's by any means necessary, including lower speed limits. Because as I said, they don't save lives, so what is the role point then? It's either to make people feel better about injuries that are going unenforced, accidents, or to go agenda.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
So, it's weird that you guys sometimes will put it on consent and other times you make it a discussion item, but this all has to do with Agenda 21, 2030, 2050, getting people out of their cars to walk and bike and take public transit. And it's interesting because it's like, you know, this brings in money for law enforcement if they do, you know, have speed checks and they're going to enforce it, right? So, it's bring in some extra dollars by, you know, doing these types of things to kind of throw it at people and, you know, just de-incentivize them from driving. I mean, eventually, you're going to make them so slow that people are going to have to get out of their cars to be able to move at all because you'll go from like, you know, from 35 to 30, to 25, to 20, to 15, to 10, to 5, and then you'll just have a zero speed limit and just, you know, basically lock people out of their cars, whatever. Or, you know, just bring in the road usage charge to continue to, you know, make sure that nobody can afford to get anywhere so that they'll stay in their little 15-minute city. But it's just interesting to see the things that you guys do, and, you know, sometimes I think, do you really know what you're doing or are you also brainwashed as well? And just kind of doing the bidding of these elites who want to lock everybody down and you're going to be, you know, walking yourself into a corner as well. And then, when you find yourself in your 15-minute city, you're going to be like, oh dang, I didn't even see the writing on the wall, but I enforced it like a motherfucker. Crazy. But, you know, it's just the way you guys do stuff. So, I mean, I think you really need to think about when you're putting, you know, not-so-important items in a discussion and then you put all this stuff in consent and nobody can address it. You know, and if you want people to stay on topic and all of these things, like, you need to be more mindful of the things that you do if you want to, you know, even have public engagement.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
You know, I know you guys are determined to annoy the shit out of us as we're driving. Did you know that the state that has no seatbelt laws has the fewest amount of accidents? Freaking amazing, isn't it? You know, you add restrictions on us, more shit goes wrong. I, I, I don't understand where you guys don't understand these things. And here's the thing, could you please fix Grape Street? I understand that you want to go ahead and prioritize Little Italy and have that traffic go by, but there is big-ass trucks that need to go get supplies out to areas. And here's another stupid-ass idea that you guys have. Why are you building in a commercial zone next to the border where all the trucks are that are going to tear up the roads all the time and you're going to have to pay to re-surface them like all the time because of all the housing that you put down, down there, instead of just keeping the big trucks only driving over in those areas? Are you that fucking stupid? Do you love wasting our money? No, because not even any of you are civil fucking engineers, but yet you are making the decisions on how we fucking run this shit. You guys are the biggest bunch of fucking morons I've ever met, and you're telling us how to fucking live. I'm going to run for the Fourth Board of Supervisors if Trump does not fix the election, and I'm going to put billboards on telling people on how to commit voter fraud and telling, asking them not to, but if they do, cheat for me. Get that bitch out of the office, out of there so that we could actually fix this shit. If you guys want to go ahead and continue voter fraud, continue this fraud, continue bullshit, and continue not paying attention to a damn thing that we have to say, then fuck it. I'll go ahead and play your fucking game. What do you think about that? Please.
Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddles, speaking to discussion item two, the recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee. I too was surprised to find it as a discussion item because I have spoken to it before because of my concern about the roads out here in the back country. So, I was surprised that it wasn't on consent and wondered why. But I would like to take this opportunity to point out that we need all the attention we can get to our roads out here and that we have a high degree of traffic crashes, particularly in the wintertime when it's darker sooner. And so, I was appreciative of the press release the chair put out in early December, reminding people, we're sorry, we have to remind people that they shouldn't drive under the influence of alcohol or drugs, that they would be conducting impaired driving patrols through the month of December. And something important to the public health world, that driving under the influence just doesn't mean alcohol. It means other medications, over-the-counter drugs, and marijuana can impair, in particular if they're in combination with each other. A lot of the funding that comes to the county for the sheriff to do these traffic patrols comes from the National Safety Council, so I would utilize some of the information on their act sheet, which reminds us that it is unsafe to be under the influence of marijuana and that can have, marijuana use can have a major impact on the safety of roadways, especially in winter weather and darker weather that we have this time of the year because marijuana slows reaction time, impacts memory, and impairs skills essential to driving. So, like my neighbors out here in the unincorporated area, we do not want more marijuana sales in our back country. We do not want more drug-impaired driving out here, and we appreciate your attention to our roads this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
So, yeah, I'm just chiming in to just let the people know that this is intact about the UN Agenda 21, and a lot of people aren't aware of what is happening and government moves incrementally, and, yeah, that's all I got to say about this.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reemer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we will now turn to my colleagues for discussion on this item. I have a comment by Supervisor Desmond.
Move to approve item two.
Move to approve item two. We have a second by Supervisor Montgomery Step. Any comments from anyone? Okay, great. Ryan, please call the roll. Please call the vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reemer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, we're now moving to item number three, which is the return back in options and analysis related to Superfund, unlock state and federal funds for toxic remediation and cleanup and SECA exemption. Just reminding everyone, this was an item that came out of a conversation we had a number of months ago about potentially making a request for the EPA to designate the site as Superfund, the Tijuana River Valley, to designate as a Superfund site. The outgrowth of that conversation was to ask staff to come back with further information about the pros and cons of potentially designating or requesting the EPA to designate this site as a Superfund site, as well as to explore other possible avenues to address the situation, the pollution and the toxic waste in the Tijuana River Valley. So, since then, there's been further developments. So, at that time, that was the board vote and the direction to staff, and this is a return back and a report back. Since that time, I personally moved forward along with, you know, over half a dozen other elected officials across the region to ask the EPA to investigate whether the, they should come and look at whether this should be designated a Superfund site. We had thousands of individuals who have been impacted, who also submitted their own testimonies about the impact of the Tijuana River Valley pollution on the air quality and the water quality and their health in the region. And so, sort of corresponding and intersecting with this report back from the board, sorry, from staff, we also did receive a letter back from the EPA saying that they would not be coming down to do the site, a site investigation as to whether the Tijuana River Valley should be designated a Superfund site. So, I know we have today someone from the EPA to talk about that. Staff has a report back on their, on their docket item and their report back, so this is a, an opportunity to have a conversation primarily about the report back from staff, but we also have the EPA here to answer questions about the request that went out, not from this board, on whether we could potentially look at whether the Tijuana River Valley should be designated a Superfund site. So, I just wanted to put this all in context. So, how this is going to work, we're going to have staff present their brief statement, then we will have public comment, and then we will have a discussion from our board members, and at the time of having a discussion by our board, we, as board members, we can ask the representative from the EPA any questions because they are here. So, just to kind of put out the process. Okay, thank you, Davia.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think you covered much of the background there that we were, have available to present, so I think that's covered. Did want to thank the county departments that have since come together, including our county council, to put together some information regarding potential alternatives to Superfund, as well as to thank Mike Montgomery from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency who flew down today. Environmental Protection Agency who flew down today, as the vice chair mentioned, to be available to answer any questions. I'll also note that additionally, in October, did want also comment on the additional board direction to explore options to file a legal complaint or join existing litigation against any potential responsible parties, such as, but not limited to, Veolia North America, the operator of the South Bay International Waste Water Treatment Plant, with regard to damages caused to the Tijuana River Valley and surrounding communities. Did want to share in this session that this information will be presented by council later in January through the closed session process. Outside of that, Vice Chair, we are prepared to answer any questions that the board may have in our purview. And again, Mike Montgomery, Director of Regional Superfund and, excuse me, Region Nine, Superfund and Emergency Management Division of the EPA, has thankfully joined us today.
Davia, before turning over public comment, do you think you could just quickly, very quickly go through all the different, you know, we, we've been talking about EPA Superfund, but there's a bunch of other stuff in your, in what, in your report back?
Um, yes, I can just give a high level.
Very quickly, yeah.
Absolutely. And we looked at several other mechanisms or laws that would provide potential opportunity to evaluate sites that have been affected by, by toxic or hazard pollutant, different approaches largely are under the U.S. EPA umbrella but delegated to various state bodies such as the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Air Pollution Control District, and the, the California Air Resources Board. So there are many different avenues, again, including the Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, and other vehicles that could be used to identify and determine certain sites are polluted and then to subsequently pursue funding and responsibility and accountability for those pollutants.
Okay. Ryan, if we could please turn to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 13 total requests to speak, three individuals in person, and 10 requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive 14 ecomments on this item, four were in favor, 10 were in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. In accordance with the board's rules, since there is 10 or more speakers, each, each person will have one minute. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called forward, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following three individuals, Paloma Aguirre, Marcus Bush, and Cesar Javier.
Good morning. My name is Paloma Aguirre. I'm the mayor of the city of Orange Beach. I'm here to ask you to repetition the Superfund site designation. We have one of the highest levels of absenteeism in South Bay Union School District. We have a number of elementary and high schools that are less than half a mile within some of these areas. We know because of scientific research, there are at least 172 toxic chemicals present in this area that can be carcinogenic, biocumulative, and can be resuspended in the air and the water and the soil. It is absolutely, I'm sorry, unacceptable that EPA has based their decision on data that's six years old. So if it's not EPA, if it's not the water board, if it's not us, then who? Who is going to protect our health? Who is going to protect the children, the immunocompromised, the elderly that every day are reporting an array of illnesses? Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, board staff, and Happy New Year. My name is Marcus Bush and I serve on City Council for National City as well as the Board of Directors for Air Pollution Control District. And I ask, it's a new year that you all have a renewed focus on this crisis. I think we all know and I hope you guys agree that this is the biggest and the worst environmental crisis in the county, in the state, and I do believe in the nation too. And I'll be honest, and I'll say this as a, as a Democrat, I'll get political. The Biden administration has failed us on this issue. They failed to declare an emergency, and our governor, I believe, has failed us to declare an emergency. I think that the Superfund site is an opportunity. I, I know that there is concerns with it, but I think it's an opportunity to really send a message that this is a crisis, that we should address it. And I would ask, particularly from Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond, that you all use your political connections with this incoming administration because the reality is our administration, this past one, failed us. And I think there's a new opportunity to work with this new administration, to treat it as a crisis as it is, and I'm willing to work with.
Thank you. Your time is up. Cesar?
I believe in the principle of repetition. Mom stepped now is smiling because I'm telling the truth. That's Counselor Bush, the former chair of the governing board, and along with Madame Reamer and the newly stepped down, that's my English, the one who heroically stepped down Madame Nora. They were all members of the governing board of the Air Pollution Control District. The air pollution, air pollution control district is failing and the leadership must step down too, to avoid further damage. This is a damage control measure. All those accountable officers in the political arena must step down now, starting with Madame Reamer.
Thank you, sir.
Et cetera. I'm sorry, but that's the truth.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted. You will then hear a recording that tells you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Paul Bold, I'm glad you, that you looked into the effects of the Superfund cleanup So, I'd say it may be a decade-long process to get put, just put on the Superfund cleanup list, which could put a lot of plans in limbo and may simply drag out the cleanup while people argue about who is responsible, who should fund it, and so on. That's my experience, much like the last 30 years. Long-term restrictions could be put on private property even after the cleanup is over. Property values could be lowered, people could.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello, this is Catherine Rhodes. First of all, this EPA letter that you have is missing from the backup agenda document, so I have no clue exactly what it says. Can you put it on the agenda so that we, we have it? And then please have Mike Montgomery from the EPA discuss his letter on not allowing the Tijuana River to be a Superfund site. And, you know, because we can't hold anybody responsible, the Matildores in Tijuana are going to still, you know, throw their trash or throw their hazardous waste into the Tijuana River coming into San Diego. So as Ms. Gary stated, please repetition the EPA because there is hazardous toxic waste material. When I was talking to the EPA before, they said because we have a wastewater treatment plant for sewage, they can't put it on the national priority list. But I told them that there has been a few different wastewater treatment plants on the EPA's national priority list because, besides sewage, they also had hazardous toxic material.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hey, Gambler here. How you guys doing? As I restated, I really don't trust anything you guys have to say because you guys are committing voter fraud. Please look up election code 18501 and you'll understand what I'm talking about. Now, I am also serious about actually running if Trump does not pick the problem, and I am terribly sorry, I should have called you by your last name, Lynch. I will try to remember your first name, and I do apologize for calling you that. You asked me not to, and I disagreed, I said it. I was just amped up at the time. So, um, yeah, I really don't think you guys should be approving anything trying to get more money for your, your pet projects. I understand there are serious problems that you guys refuse to actually address in a serious manner, but, you know, you guys aren't the people to do it. I, I.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Truth, everything I warned about an EPA Superfund has been proven correct. This was one of many political theater items Tara wasted county resources on. It didn't matter to her whether or not District One's homes were on the line. Tara sideswiped D1's former rep with a campaign conference where she was sneezing all over future inputted Supervisor Paloma's back. Just because you guys have politicized unions in common doesn't make a Superfund a realistic or good option when it has negative consequences as bad as free trade fascism itself. Property values decreased by up to 8%. How much more do you guys think IB can afford? Nobody gave the very few who submitted the Superfund application the right to designate anything under federal jurisdiction. But they don't have to worry, right? Because as part of the cleanup process, restrictions may be placed on the use of affected property. They may be permanent controls. Sewage and dumping doesn't even qualify for a Superfund. This is all a scam. There are over 1,340 sites sitting untouched. The EPA has failed to make any progress on their Border 2025 goals. Blaming the IBWC and not the federal government in Mexico is proof of political theater lies.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Just wondering how long people are going to have to suffer through your guys' negligence in pretending to deal with this crisis. Um, you know, I mean, the EPA should be, you know, even making a statement to, you know, kind of fess up as to why their, their negligence is, is also showing very clearly. And, you know, it's interesting because you don't want to hold who is accountable accountable, which would be the county, but also Mexico. And, you know, instead of holding Mexico accountable, you're worried about commerce and making sure that you guys can still do business, all while they're poisoning people that you represent. And when there's, you know, these plants that are trying to actually mitigate it and can't because they don't even have any funding, it's like, it's just a circle jerk of a bunch of negligence happening all while people are suffering. Their lives are actually in danger because of this, and this moves at such a snail's pace. It's like, what, are we going to have to wait another 30 years for it to even pretend to be even cleared up? I mean, very sad.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hey, Gonzalo here. So yeah, first off, I want to just mention how all the agencies that Paloma Aguirre just mentioned, Aguirre just mentioned, first of all, when you call them, they put you off or they give you some lame excuses. So yeah, just wanted to set the record on that. And yeah, putting the TJ River Valley on the Superfund list is impractical and totally counterproductive. But yeah, I just wanted to really stress about the agencies that you mentioned, Paloma. And yeah, good luck trying to get seat one. I'm done.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, just want to start with a couple of comments and then, I know, I'm sure my colleagues have lots to say and much to discuss here. First of all, I appreciate the, you know, the initial look from staff at all these regulatory tools. I'm very upset about the EPA's decision to not look more carefully at the Tijuana River Valley. And I want to, you know, make a personal commitment to move forward with trying to figure out what some of these other tools might be. So I appreciate this as sort of an initial look, and I'm absolutely going to be doing a deeper dive on this, on this board item and figuring out, you know, what else we could do as a board to investigate and identify what else we could do. Because I think you all put out a whole bunch of various different things that we might investigate, but obviously they're very complicated. There's a lot of fact-finding that would need to be involved. There's a lot of regulatory agencies, there's a lot of players, and so I know this was sort of like just a very beginning. So I definitely will be following this up. Will be pulling on the thread, trying to figure out, okay, what, what are all the other things that we could look at? What are all the different avenues we could explore to complement the work that's already been done? And I do want to recognize that there has been really important work done already. I really appreciate the work of our congressional delegation in particular, who's done a really extraordinary job of winning a whole bunch of appropriations to fix that sewage treatment plant, including recent appropriations that we hear are coming that I think aren't 100% confirmed, but seem pretty, pretty likely. So I really do want to thank our congressional delegation for all of that work. All that being said, all of that's very forward-looking, right? Like the work that Congress is doing to try to appropriate money to, to fix the sewage treatment plant, all this is sort of look, you know, could take years and years to build out that sewage treatment plant. And that remain, means that there's a couple huge gaps, right? Like, one, we have some significant urgent problems right now in terms of air quality and contamination that even if we are able to fix that sewage treatment plant, that's, that's going to not help anyone for like three, four, five, seven years. So we got to do something today. We got to do a lot more today. And even if we fix the sewage treatment plant, if there's contaminants in the water and the soil that are long-term contaminants, that are toxic contaminants, that could have long-term impacts on the health and well-being of our entire community, even if we're able to get the sewage treatment plant fixed down in Punta Banderas and, you know, at the border, and even if the water is, is clean. But if there's contaminants in the soil and we don't remediate those, then, then we're just papering over the problem. So I am, want to say, I am concerned that the EPA made a decision to reject our petition without even coming to visit the site. So, you know, the letter we sent said, hey, we have a bunch of studies that are old, it suggests that there might be a problem, we know that there's a lot of health complaints for people in the community, but we're, we don't have the scientific expertise to really ascertain whether these are real problems or not. And as a researcher by training, you know, one of the things I've always, I always said to my students is absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. And I think all we want, all I want, is for the EPA to come out and take soil site samples. And to be very honest, if the EPA came out and took the soil site samples and said, hey, there's no, no toxins here, my answer would be great, you know, thank goodness. Like, I'd be very happy. That would be great news. But when we don't have the data, when all we have are studies that are like six years old from, you know, that are pretty limited, not very robust, and then a bunch of community complaints around like health outcomes, I just feel like this, not, not taking the soil site samples is like ostrich putting our head in the sand, saying, oh, we don't know 100% sure there's a problem. Well, that's kind of the whole point of asking the EPA to come out and investigate. So I'm, I appreciate the work from staff. I am very disturbed at what feels like ostrich behavior. But that being said, I do, I don't want to just attack the EPA without giving them a chance to explain themselves. So maybe we could invite them up to answer any questions or to just explain a little bit about the rationale behind rejecting our petition.
With that, Mr. Montgomery, would you kindly come up to the podium here and, and share a little bit? Thank you again for joining us this morning.
Good morning, board. Thank you for the opportunity to come down. Just to set a little context, I'm Mike Montgomery. I'm the Director for the Superfund and Emergency Management Division for U.S. EPA in Region Nine. We have 113 Superfund sites that we manage across Arizona, Nevada, California, Hawaii, and the Outer Pacific Islands. We also work with 148 federally designated tribes. We do important emergency response work in responding to hazardous waste spills that happen in a variety of contexts. We do emergency fire response. And we've got a lot of experience working on Superfund sites, and we have a lot of different types of Superfund sites that we work on. We have a lot of abandoned mines. We have a large portfolio of abandoned uranium mines on the Navajo Nation. We deal with area-wide groundwater problems. We deal with area-wide groundwater problems that impact the municipal water supplies of a number of large cities in our region. Uh, we also work on, um, hazardous waste repositories, uh, military-based cleanups. Our one national prison list site here in San Diego County is the, um, is the Camp Pendleton site that we work on with the Regional Water Board and the Department of Toxic Substances Control. Uh, uh, you know, I, I can't, um, begin to, uh, uh, explain the seriousness with which we approach this problem. We have a lot of programs that have been working on it for a very long time, under the context of the Clean Water Act. We have our Border Water Infrastructure Program. Uh, we have a border, the Border 2025 Program. And when, uh, more recent, um, uh, problems got worse and the county stood up an incident command, we in turn stood up a cross-divisional effort to try and make sure that we were coordinating between our air division, our water division, um, and, and the Superfund Program because we had had to come out and support the county hazmat team because there was some concern that there were some, um, uh, that there were some toxic gases that aren't typically associated with sewage that had been reported by researchers that caused quite a bit of alarm. Um, we were, uh, working with the county staff, I've seen the county staff report, it's quite good, uh, it's quite thorough. It doesn't talk to the information that was provided in the petition by the petitioners. Um, the petitioners had asked us for a prompt response. Um, the petition, uh, you know, uh, did provide some valuable information. We met with the Water Board, we met with the 211 Recovery Task Force, which, under the Clean Water Act, is working on restoration of the river. The Superfund Program, as the staff report clearly points out, is geared towards dealing with hazardous waste, not human waste. The human waste has caused incredible deleterious health effects on the economy and, and, and people's health. It's, it's a horrible situation. The solution here is to prevent transboundary migration of sewage. There is stormwater in that sewage, and there are hazardous substances commonly found at low concentrations in stormwater everywhere. You know, North County, San Francisco Bay, you know, are, that, how humans live, you know, results in, uh, you know, all kinds of oils and pesticides and materials getting into stormwater that unfortunately pollute, uh, watersheds of our country. Our program is not geared towards dealing with stormwater pollution and the hazardous substances that are contained in low concentrations in stormwater pollution. So, um, uh, we recognize that there's some data that, you know, that, that was in the petition, that we received from the petitioners, that indicates that those low levels of hazardous substances are present that are associated with stormwater. That's why we felt it was really important to engage with the Water Board, because they have the authority under the Clean Water Act to address both hazardous substances and human waste. And so, um, you know, we're prepared to work with them as we go forward. I, I don't know that, um, it's necessary for me to talk to the, um, the challenges that, that the petition, uh, offered from the standpoint of not conforming with the type of information we need in order to, uh, take a petition and do a assessment, right? Um, I can't talk about that if there are questions about that. But, uh, I, I guess I'll, I'll just stop there and say, you know, I think that, um, we're, we're, we're really ready to work with the county and the county staff. You've got excellent staff, they're very focused on the issues. Um, the staff report was very thorough, I'm not sure there's anything I would add to that. I think that, uh, you know, uh, if the Board finds that there's a need to further explore, the need for sampling, I would really encourage that we work with the State of California, the Department of Toxic, Toxic and Substances Control, and the Regional Water Board to identify, you know, to verify the need for that and the location of it. But we did, we did look at the data, we did talk with folks, we did compare that data to our screening levels that we use nationally, and, uh, the, the results of that evaluation are contained in the petition. We were also asked to, to respond promptly to the petition, so we didn't want to wait. We knew the Board was considering whether or not to submit a petition as a board, and, um, uh, I, I don't, I'm not here to discourage the Board from taking that action. Uh, if there is a revised petition, we'll take a look at that. Uh, I don't know what that would ask for, it's really up to you all to decide whether or not that's a narrower petition with a narrower ask focused on a more specific geographic area, but something that certainly could be discussed. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you. I, I mean, I have a couple of questions, I'm sure my Board members will as well, so if you, if you wouldn't mind just, um, you know, being available for, for some questions.
Sure.
I think my question begins with, you know, it is very clear that the purview of the Superfund, um, uh, legislation is not human waste, and it's not, uh, low-level, um, toxic contaminants of the type you would find in stormwater, right? You know, that is quite clear. Uh, and my interest in moving forward with this petition and submitting it is really driven by, um, a concern that there may be, note that there definitely is, but that there may be higher levels of contaminants that came, that are in the soil in particular, and potentially the groundwater, uh, but most specifically the soil, given that, um, there's been so much industrial waste generated in Tijuana, uh, over the last 50 years, especially as Tijuana grew nearly six times, um, from its, its size. It's six times bigger now than it was, uh, less than 50 years ago. That is a massive amount of growth that's been, and there's been a lot of industrial, um, a lot of industrial activity. Um, so I, I, I think this is where I'm not, it's hard for me to understand why there isn't enough information in the petition for y'all to just come out and test. Again, acknowledging that we don't know, and I certainly would never argue that I'm sure that there's any kind of, uh, contaminants in the soil or water that would justify a Superfund designation. I do not know, and there very well may not be. And in fact, as I said before, I would be very happy if you did, uh, take, you know, did do sort of, uh, appropriate levels of site inspection and then ascertain that that is not an issue, because that would allow us to better focus our limited bandwidth, um, on, in other areas. So, I'm not like, uh, I would love it if you guys came out and did these site studies and told us like, nope, it doesn't qualify for a Superfund. I'd actually be quite happy, then we would know it wasn't as toxic as I fear. So I think that's my confusion here of like, like I said, absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. As a researcher, it feels like there's enough information here. As an attorney, if it was a probable cause, right? If I had to get a warrant to go investigate the Tijuana River Valley, I think there was enough information in our petition for like, a warrant for investigation. And I think that's where I'm finding the disconnect of like, what else do you guys need to at least go check it out?
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess I would maybe invite a conversation about the evidence that is there, right? There is data there, there were studies that were done by the, um, Border Patrol, there were studies that were done by IBWC. There is going to be more information coming out. I understand that there's researchers who collect data maybe in this space around sediment. Um, and, uh, so that evidence, right, uh, does indicate that there isn't the type of source of hazardous waste that we would typically address in the Superfund Program. And regardless, we do always kind of look to our states to help us decide what's important and what's not important. And before we move forward with the final listing, and, and by the way, the, the process for considering listing is, can take many years.
Oh, it's super long. That's why I'm saying, I, I, I know it could take, it could take a decade. So that, that's why I think I'm, it's very unclear to me why we wouldn't at least check, right? Like, I, I hear you that we don't have the evidence, but that's how, that's why we contacted you, because we have concerns, but no, not enough data.
Well, so, um, it gets to a really important question we deal with all the time as scientists, and, and we are familiar with the watershed. I think there was a little bit of an implication that we don't know the area, we know it really well, uh, we work directly with our water team, and, as I said, the Tijuana River Task Force and our water division, uh, who's very familiar. And, and I worked on the border program for a number of years, and I ran the Border Water Infrastructure Program for quite a while. So, I've been down in the Canyon Collectors, I've been, you know, all, all throughout this area, so pretty familiar with it. And I think that, um, there's always a point in, in the process where you have to ask yourself, okay, do we have enough information to be able to make a decision, right? And so we have screening levels that we use to help us to determine if something is above a screening level and, and where, and, and how significantly above it, to then say, focus in and say, okay, let's go look here, let's go look in this area, right? And so the, one of the challenges with the petition was, it identified a six-mile area. Um, we looked at data that was, um, kind of focused, you know, on, on, on certain areas, but those certain areas were very close to where water comes across the border. And so, we felt like we had a, a pretty good, the petition, you know, gave, you know, and, and the other data we collected from the Water Board, and the, frankly, the conversation we have with the Water Board, um, resulted in us making the determination that we did, again, a very prompt determination at the request of the petitioners, that we didn't see the type of conditions that would warrant further investigation for a Superfund site. Now, that being said, uh, Superfund has a different threshold than the Clean Water Act, right? The Clean Water Act has broader authority, and the Water Board has identified within their, um, Water Pollution Control Plan under the Clean Water Act, that there may be hazardous substances. And we're ready to support them, but I would really ask that the county work with the state and with us in a technical advisory role to, to figure out, you know, whether or not additional sampling is warranted and where that would be conducted, because we don't, you know, for a brief stint, we had quite a bit of money. Now the bipartisan infrastructure law has, has, has lapsed, the additional funding that we have is still higher than what we had before the, um, the bipartisan infrastructure law, but we just don't have the type of money to look, uh, you know, everywhere for everything.
That's actually a very helpful context. So, what would it cost to do the kind of site, uh, sampling that would give us, uh, better, some level of certainty that there's not those toxins in the water? I mean, in the soil, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I, I, it's hard to say, it depends on the scope and, and where, and, you know, a six-mile area would be really large. If you tried to just sample the sediments in the stream bed that were, um, you know, sort of, transect and, you know, some sort of sediment sampling, uh, it could be very reasonable, it could be under $100,000, could be under, well, I would, I would probably cap it at $100,000, but-
For the, for a small area?
A large program would be quite a bit more.
For like the six mi, I mean, I'm just trying to have better understanding, because it sounds like some of the constraints here are financial. So what, what is that? You know, if you, if you were to go and do those, collect that sam, those samples?
Yeah, again, it's a conversation. It's not, it's not about, you know, at this, I mean, it's a conversation we need to have with the Water Board, and we need to have with Department of Toxic Substances Control. Um, because, again, if we were to even really go down the path of doing site assessment work, we would want them to be on board with it and understanding the need for it. And at this moment, it's not their highest priority. They're working on a number of other really present problems, including controlling trash and working with us to control transboundary sewage. That's really the answer here. There's also a valid argument that until you can reduce that transboundary sewage flow, um, it, it's hard to really level set on what the level of contamination might be in the sediments.
Okay. I mean, I, I just want to say, I mean, and I want to, I want to make sure my colleagues have a lot of time to ask you guys questions too, and I might circle back. I think I really am concerned about the idea that, oh, it's someone else's problem, go fix that over here, go fix that over here. It's all of the above. I mean, I certainly would not say that this is like, this is a problem that's going to be solved in any order of magnitude by any kind of Superfund designation. I think it's all, we need to be doing all of the above. I agree with you that, you know, addressing the sewage flows has to be a top priority, the trash, all of that is absolutely imperative, it's affecting people's day-to-day lives. I think my concern here is, we know, it could take like a decade, even once we got site samples, and then you got to get on the list, and the state has to agree, and then we have to go through Congress, like, it could be a decade, even once we had the data. So the idea that we should like, wait to find that, to, to do that, so, site samples until we're able to fix the sewage treatment plant, which we are entrained to do, but that could take, even if, you know, we're rebuilding it, but it could take like five or six years. So it might be five or six years before the sewage is under control, and then we've waited six years to collect the site samples to find out if there's toxins.
Yeah, no, I appreciate-
So then instead of 10 years from now having a Superfund site, it's now 16 years? This is like a, not a good plan.
Yeah. No, I, no, I appreciate that. And I'm not suggesting, uh, any particular timeframe, I'm just pointing out that, you know, usually when we're dealing with a Superfund site, we identify the source and we, we, we stop and contain the source if it's contamination that's spreading in a community. And in this case, um, you know, the, 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 the transboundary flow, whether it be sewage or stormwater, is the source of potential loads to the estuary and the lower river. I'm just, I'm talking in a real broader context about how Superfund works. I, I, you know, the, the, there is an existing group that the Water Board is working on, the Tijuana River Recovery Task Force. They have very good scientists at the Water Board, we're ready to help them. The Clean Water Act, to me, seems like a more strategic tool to use. Um, but again, it would involve work, the county working with the Water Board and us supporting that effort, and, and then maybe a role for DTSC. If there are in fact areas that are identified that would rise to the level of Superfund designation. It's important to understand that when we look at listing a Superfund site, we, it's a, it's, it's a formula, but it's a pretty simple formula, right? It's, what, what, how many contaminants are there? How toxic are they? How widespread are they? And how many people would be exposed to them, right? And you, you know, you basically look at, because we're, because our, our use of the tool of Superfund is really based on a population-based exposure, right? And so, by example, right, uh, we have, uh, an abandoned mine in Arizona which we're cleaning up, four million cubic yards of tailings in the middle of a community, right? Over the years, the tailings have blown off into the residential areas. We have hundreds of yards to clean up where there's arsenic that well exceeds the protective level for residential soils. That's a clear case, where we've got a fairly large population that we know is exposed to a very, uh, toxic compound that, um, uh, that is affecting an entire community. There's a large population of people that are affected. Another example that actually involves a wastewater treatment plant, uh, in, in, in South LA County, the Montrose facility manufactured 70% of the DDT that was used in the world, right? They discharged a lot of their wastewater through the LA County sanitation system and it ended up out off of the coast of Piles vertes shelf, right? So, in that case, you know, we've seen high levels of DDT in fish, uh, that are consumed, uh, that are consumed by recreational fishermen, by some people, low-income communities that are fishing off of piers in the area. Um, so there's a fairly decent population exposed, not to mention a really heavy impact on the environment, given the nature of DDT and its accumulation within the food web and its impacts on birds and sea mammals. And so those are examples of really significant impacts to the environment, population-based exposures to humans that warrant a Superfund level of involvement. So, um, there has to be something there, and it has to be threatening or currently, you know, uh, exposing individuals at, at some scale in order for us to really get involved. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, this is all very clear, I think, to anyone who's read the, the cover page on what the Superfund does. So yes, very clear. Um, I think my question for you, and maybe, um, would be helpful for you to just sort of, the reason I thought this would be helpful to look at a Superfund was because the Clean Water, my understanding is the Clean Water Act, um, and what's possible, um, with the Water Board and the Clean Water Act is different. It's complementary, it's different, uh, they don't have the same level of funding to do like large-scale soil remediation, uh, they're able to do more like wetlands restoration, um, uh, dealing with human waste that, uh, decays pretty quickly, like with very short half-lives. So the, the sort of scope of, uh, remediation is, is much quicker, um, and is designed to address problems that are, sort of have a quicker solution, not like less important problems, but, um, you know, more human waste scale instead of like industrial pollutants that are like stick around for a long time. Like, that's kind of how I understood the lane. Superfund, long-term, long-time problems, Clean Water Act, like, equally big problems, but they're shorter scale, human waste, smaller levels or- scale, human waste, smaller levels or, or lower levels of industrial contaminants that can be contained more easily. So I thought of these as complements, not substitutes.
Well, yeah, I mean, the scientific process is such that you can't presume that cleanup is needed until you complete your investigations. And so what we're really talking about is we're the authorities that conduct investigations.
Yep, exactly. That's exactly right. And that's why I'm trying to better understand, why wouldn't you guys check, right? Or collaborate with the, right? It's not, not that this is EPA's job alone, but why would you not check? Like, go and do this, go do the site soil analysis and, and then come up with a more comprehensive plan, including maybe nothing to do with Superfund, or maybe there is?
Because there is an existing group that's managed by the state that is doing that work, right? And so, you know, I've learned in the course of my career that, you know, and working in both water programs and Superfund, Superfund is really a program of last resort and you rely on those programs that can do the regulatory work and get things done where they exist. I, I, again, I mean, I think that because there's an existing state-led group that has local participation from stakeholders, including landowners and IBWC and other players, because that group exists and is operating and has the objective of restoring this watershed, this six-mile area, we really would look to them to, to ask us or to work with us. And so that's, I guess, the point I'm trying to reiterate is that, you know, we can serve in a technical advisory role and I think that the Water Board can collect that data. The evidence that was contained in the petition and that we've identified at the moment doesn't rise to that threshold of us doing an assessment.
Okay. I appreciate all this. I know my colleagues also have questions, so I turn to Supervisor Desmond.
Mr. Montgomery, thanks for being here, but my head's about to explode. We want to do all of these more studies, all these more information and examining and looking for more data. We got sewage coming across the border. That's our problem. We don't need more testing. We've known this problem for decades. And I understand you're, you've got a toolbox that you work out of and you've got only so many tools and you can only work on so many types of problems. We get that. But, and then, but I guess telling us to go to the state, this is an international border. This is not within the state itself. So we're kind of turning to you and other entities and saying, help us. Is there an exemption at all that's possible for to, I know you've got only a certain amount of parameters and you don't have human waste. Is there an exemption process, process or a variance waiver process or anything within your, within your organization?
No, we can't change the statute and there's no waiver.
And is that Congress that has to change the statute?
Yeah, that would, that would, that would be a rulemaking too.
Okay. And I get it. You can't fix this, but I'm, we want to open our beaches. We've had fricking beaches closed for over 1,000 days, over three years in Imperial Beach and in Coronado. We're a tourist area and our beaches are closed. And we get it. It's, it's human waste. I don't know how many more studies we got to do to figure that out. And so in stopping the sewage coming across the border, that should be priority number one. I get it. But we as a state, this water is coming across, the sewage is coming across an international boundary. So we're, you know, we're looking to your organization and others. I'm done studying. We know what the fricking problem is. Let's fix it somehow. And, and I'm glad to hear you're willing to help out. I sit on the Water Board. There's no money at that Water Board. I mean, unfortunately, you get beat up every time they try to raise rates. And so it's, locally, we can't handle it or manage it. The state is, you know, points the finger to you and you point the finger to them and, and that's where we're stuck at. We want our beaches open. That's what we, that's, that would be, I, we get it. There's probably going to have to be cleanup, but we want to open our beaches. And so it's very frustrating hearing we got to do all these more studies. No, we don't. We really don't. We just need some agency with the Kahunas or something to step up and fix this thing. So maybe it is the new administration, but I appreciate you coming here and taking this crap from me, but, but it, literally, but the, it's, I'm done analyzing. Let's, let's get, let's get this fixed and we'd love to have your help. Thank you.
No, sorry. Oh, clapping. Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues on this item? Well, thank you very much for being here. You know, I, my reaction to this is we got to figure out next steps here. I don't think this is done, in my opinion. I want to think this through and, you know, maybe come back at another meeting in the very near future to sort of figure out next steps and particularly how we can, you know, move forward with some support from the EPA. And, you know, I don't think a no, I don't think no is going to have, is going to suffice. We're going to have to figure out some path forward. So, you know, I think expecting to hear from us in the very near future and perhaps we can collaborate in the next couple of weeks of, you know, what would make sense from your perspective in terms of a request from the EPA to support. I take seriously my colleague's point. He does sit on the Water Board and they don't have any money. So, you know, maybe there's something here where we can ask the EPA to, you know, play the lead role in collaborating with the, with the Water Board and collecting this information. You know, I think we got to think it through. I don't, I don't have an answer today, but this is absolutely not done. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate being here.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. We stand ready to support the county. And as I said to staff, we are your partners in this in all ways. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Unfortunately, we need a motion to accept the report that we are doing nothing.
I'll hold my nose and make the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second, but I don't think it's absolutely nothing. I just want to put that on the record, but I will second the motion.
Do you hear my sound?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I'm a little bit ill, so my voice is low. I will second the motion. I just would say, I don't think we're doing absolutely nothing. I think we have a couple of different paths and I think that we, this is a system that we have to work through and that's just the way that it is. And sometimes, yes, it becomes overwhelming, but with water in particular, it's always been very complex. And our job is to work through what we need to work through in order to get to where we need to get. And I'm just glad that the attention remains on this issue. And I would like to thank the local advocates for that. And also the elected officials here, Paloma Gary and Marcus Bush, for continuing their advocacy. But this is a system that we need to work through. And I think from what I heard, it's clear that based on the type of waste and what we're dealing with, we have another agency that we have to work with, you know, and we won't stop. So I'll second the motion with that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Ma'Am Montgomery. Step, please call the vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson, remember that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we now move on to discussion of item four, McClellan-Palomar Airport, approved lease with American Airlines, repeal, waiver, amend board policy F44 and related sequel findings. This item was continued from the December 11th, 2024 session. I know staff does have a presentation on this item. Jamie and Marali, are you all ready? I think Tom Bosworth is joining us as well. Okay. Okay, please go ahead and begin us when you're ready.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Jamie Abbott. I'm the Director of Airports. Commercial airline services propose to return to McClellan-Palomar Airport in February 2025. We are here to present and seek your approval for a lease agreement with American Airlines. County airports is responsible for the development, operations, and maintenance of eight county airports, five of which are federally recognized, meaning they can receive grants from the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA. The county is responsible for the maintenance and operations of runways, taxiways, ramps, access roads, and other facilities that support general aviation and commercial aircraft. By maintaining a robust county airport system and complying with federal regulations that make us eligible for FAA funds that help build and maintain our airports, we provide critical services for our community, businesses, emergency responders, and flying public with no cost to the county's general fund. Palomar Airport supports economic activity and prosperity in North County and the region. The airport currently supports approximately 2,600 jobs in the region, drives $461 million in industry activity, and generates $72 million in federal, state, and local taxes annually. And we expect these impacts to grow with an anticipated 150 jobs added related to this lease agreement. County airports, including Palomar Airport, are heavily funded by FAA grants, with over 90% of all capital costs being funded by the FAA for building and maintaining airport infrastructure. The county previously obtained FAA grant funds for over $123.5 million in improvements, including $53 million for just Palomar, underscoring significant investments in the airport since 1999, which has largely been underused for the last nine years. The airport has a terminal building and supporting infrastructure for commercial service with available space, which has been underutilized since 2015 when United Express stopped commercial service at Palomar. In addition to the capital improvements funded mostly by FAA, it costs about $7 million annually in county airport enterprise funds to operate and maintain Palomar Airport. Palomar Airport has been in operation in Carlsbad since 1959 and is designated by the FAA as a commercial service airport. United Express previously provided commercial service out of Palomar Airport for more than 20 years before it stopped service in 2015. Aside from San Diego International Airport, Palomar is the only other facility in the county providing access to commercial flights for our region. Resuming commercial service will bolster the economic impact for the region and help ensure critical ongoing financial commitment from the FAA. The county is obligated by federal law and FAA regulations to review and negotiate in good faith without discrimination with service providers wishing to lease space and provide commercial service. If the county were to be found operating outside of these regulations and grant assurances, the county could no longer qualify for these FAA grants and funds that allow the airports to operate without utilizing more of the county's highly constrained general purpose revenue or discretionary funds. This is not just speculation. There are recent cases in California where FAA funding was lost or put at risk based on decisions of the local jurisdiction operating the airport. If the board chooses not to approve the lease agreement with American Airlines, it poses a risk of the county losing FAA grant funding for current and future capital projects. In addition, FAA could require repayment of previously awarded grants. One example is a final order that was issued by the FAA against the city of Santa Monica in 2009. The city attempted to restrict specific aircraft from using the airport. The city was found to be in violation of Federal Grant Assurance 22 and was ordered to repeal in ordinance banning certain aircraft from using the airport. The action also resulted in the loss of FAA grant funding for the airport. In a more recent situation, the FAA investigation was initiated due to the city of Los Angeles not approving a lease at the Van Nuys Airport, which is part of the Los Angeles system of airports and including LAX. The communities surrounding the airport expressed concerns over noise from the proposed leaseholder. The city of Los Angeles, similar to the county of San Diego, has an obligation to make the airport available to all types of aircraft and aviation uses. And concerns over noise are not acceptable reason for denying a lease agreement according to FAA regulations. As a result of initially denying the lease, the city was determined by the FAA to be in violation of Grant Assurance 22. The FAA considered withdrawal of millions of dollars in funding to the city of LA, including LAX. The city of Los Angeles ultimately reversed course and approved the lease in November 2024 to avoid repercussions. The county could face similar challenges if the lease is denied. Staff and American Airlines are proposing the board approve a two-year lease term beginning February 13th, 2025. The terms of the lease are typical to other leases the county previously held with other airlines that operated out of the airport. American Airlines will use the existing terminal space, parking facilities, aircraft ramp space, ticket counters, kiosks, and office space. We anticipate receiving over $600,000 in revenue from each year of the lease. Staff recommends partially waiving fees for the first year of operations, which is a common practice across the industry to incentivize new service. Use existing underused facilities, create regional economic and transportation benefits, and is encouraged by the FAA. These waivers are meant to help mitigate the significant risks the business undertakes when expanding service to new regions. Lastly, we'd like to share that American Airlines representatives are here today. If members of the board would like to ask them questions at the end of the presentation. With the board's approval of the lease, American Airlines will be operating from Palomar Airport with a first flight of February 13th, 2025. They will be offering two flights per day to the Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport and use an Embraer 175. The Embraer 175 is a common 76-seat regional jet used by airlines today and is similar in size to the large business jets that currently use the airport. The county requested American Airlines start flights later in the morning to adhere with the Voluntary Noise Abatement Program, or VNAP. However, they need to leave by 6:15 a.m. to connect people in Phoenix to other flights around the country. Because the FAA approved, approved the noise abatement plan as voluntary instead of mandatory, it would violate federal grant assurances to enforce a flight curfew without FAA approval or to deny the lease for being unable to comply with the VNAP. Approval of the lease is within the county's existing authority and complies with all conditions governing the use of the airport, including all federal, state, and local laws and land use restrictions. Here is a map of connections fed off the 6:15 a.m. departure from Palomar. Through commercial service, Palomar will offer connectivity to Phoenix and in turn the rest of the country, benefiting both the regional business community and leisure travelers. Contribute to the county's sustainability goals by helping to reduce the amount of vehicle trips to San Diego International or the Orange County and Los Angeles area airports. Support the transition to a sustainable and low-carbon aviation future and create jobs that support the airline operations as well as industry partners such as transportation providers, restaurants, tourist activities, and hotel and other accommodations. As part of our ongoing community engagement efforts, county staff reached out to stakeholders and presented the terms of the lease to the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee. The committee recommended approval of the proposed lease without the fee waiver. Staff also reached out to multiple chambers of commerce and industry-related groups who are enthusiastic about the anticipated regional economic benefit and job creation. The county previously developed a Voluntary Noise Abatement Program, or VNAP, in 2006, providing guidance and recommendations to pilots to help minimize noise levels over residential areas and raise residential and pilot awareness of noise and low-flight concerns. We also expanded our noise monitoring around the airport, adding two new noise monitors and a staff member to address concerns and continue education to the pilot community. Reestablishing commercial service at Palomar brings enormous benefits to the county and its airport system, including increasing passengers, which will contribute towards an increase of FAA grant entitlement funding of $850,000, which can be utilized for eligible capital improvement projects across our airport system, helping the county invest in infrastructure improvements and creating jobs to facilitate those projects. It will also generate additional revenue into the Airport Enterprise Fund, and it will reactivate the terminal and other facilities for commercial service use. If the item is not approved, the county risks losing current and future FAA grant funds needed to make capital improvements such as runway and taxiway rehabilitation, drainage improvements, and safety enhancements across its five federally recognized airports, which could result in over $5 million in average annual costs. The FAA could also require the county to refund previously awarded grants due to grant assurance violations. Without the FAA grant funding, general purpose revenue would be required to operate and maintain the airport system for general aviation. It may also require increasing rents from all aviation and non-aviation leaseholders to offset the operations and maintenance costs. This could put continued airport operations and the quality of the facilities at risk. Today's actions also include addressing board policy F44, established in 1987 and amended over the years to provide guidelines for the operation and development of the airport. Throughout the 11 amendments to the policy, seat limitations were set in place, indicating that aircraft over a certain number of seats would not be able to use the airport. This is inconsistent with FAA grant assurances and the 2021 adopted master plan for the airport. In order to meet FAA grant assurances, the seat restriction should be In order to meet FAA grant assurances, the seat restriction should be removed. The FAA is the only authority that can determine what aircraft are allowed to use the airport. As such, county staff is recommending that the policy be repealed. Today, we are asking the board to consider: Approve the county entering into a two-year lease with American Airlines in compliance with the FAA regulations and authorize the Director of Airports to execute the lease. Reestablishing commercial service at Palomar Airport brings enormous benefits to the county and its airport system, including increasing our revenue into the Airport Enterprise Fund, creating over 150 jobs, and reactivating the county's improved facilities that have sat largely unused for the last nine years, allowing the county to maximize the return on these investments. Waive approximately $351,000 of fees and charges the county airports is anticipated to receive from American Airlines in the first year of operations. These fee waivers are common in the industry to support and incentivize new commercial services and are supported by the FAA. And repeal, waive, or amend Board Policy F44, staff's recommendation, recommended approach is to repeal the policy. This concludes staff's presentation. We appreciate your time and consideration of these items, and we're available to take any questions.
If my colleagues don't have any questions, I do, but I'd rather wait for my questions till after hearing from comments from the public. So please call public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 28 total requests to speak, 17 individuals in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive 1,119 ecomments on this item. 418 of them were in favor, 682 of them were in opposition, and three were neutral. For any individuals that have requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. In accordance with the Board rules, since there is 10 or more speakers, each person will have one minute. We'll go ahead and begin with in-person speakers, those that are in favor of this item. As your name is called, if you could please come stand, come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. At the podium, I will be calling individuals in groups of three, and I'd like to invite forward the following three individuals: Eduardo Angeles and Olivia Oliver Brackett and Phyllis Trumbey. You'll then have one minute to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Eduardo Angeles. I'm the Director for State and Local Government Affairs for American Airlines, and here to support and ask your requests, respectfully requesting your yes vote on this item. I defer to staff's recommendation and excellent presentation, and myself and other members of American Airlines are here availing ourselves for questions for the Board of Supervisors. Well, thank you in advance and respectfully request your yes vote.
Good morning, Supervisors. Through the chair, Supervisor Lawson Reimer, Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Montgomery Sepp, and Supervisor Desmond. I am Olivia Brackett. Up until almost two years ago, I was a manager at McCullin Palomar Airport. I was blessed to work for the county for 22 years. In that time, I saw the benefits of regular airline service, both for the community and the county. Having the ability to take a commercial flight from North County would reduce traffic, vehicle traffic and pollution on our roads instead of having to drive to San Diego International. Almost every day, staff would receive phone calls from local residents inquiring about commercial service, demonstrating a great need and desire by local residences flying from Palomar Airport. Additionally, when there was regular commercial service, Palomar Airport's flight schedule webpage consistently ranked near the top of the county's webpages overall for the entire county that was being accessed. You want to talk about ease of use? We had to purchase a bike rack because some people rode their bicycle with a backpack to the airport to catch a flight. So never saw that one coming.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the next three speakers: Clayton Lackey, Brian Fox, and Darren Miller.
Hello, I'm Phyllis Trumbey. I'm a pilot. I live under the flight path at Gillespie Airport, on the current chair of the Gillespie Field Development Council. I'm in, I'm up, I'm in favor of this American Airlines lease. I'm going to talk to you specifically about the evidence of noise, not the perception or fear of noise, but the evidence. So this airplane takes off at 100 decibels and leaves the airport in less than a minute. What's 100 decibels? The leaf blower and the lawnmower, which you are very close to, nobody's close to the airport, the airplane when it takes off. The motorcycle on the freeway, 100 decibels. The closest home to the runway here is just under a mile from the airport. They'll hear the noise of the airport for less than a minute at 38 decibels. A whisper is 30 decibels. Snoring is 50 to 80 decibels. I think my husband's closer to 80. So the noise, the evidence of noise is it will be quiet.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Clayton Lackey, and I serve as Vice President of Carlsbad Jet Center, a proud tenant at Palomar Airport. I'm here today to express the Carlsbad Jet Center's support for this item. We support the fiscal vitality of Palomar Airport and believe the return of commercial service at the airport is a step in that direction. With that said, we recognize the introduction of commercial flights brings new security requirements and operational complexities. As part of my role, I work to ensure the Jet Center operates efficiently and with minimal disruption. We have identified potential impacts to our operations as well as those of our partners due to the arrival of American Airlines flights. While we support this item before you, we do acknowledge the challenges it presents. We greatly appreciate the strong partnership we've built with county staff. They've been attentive and proactive in addressing our concerns. We are confident this collaboration will help us mitigate disruptions to the operations. I'd like to specifically thank John Otto, Jamie Abbott from County Airports, Morale Pusardi from Public Works for their responsiveness, dedication, and ongoing efforts to address these matters. In conclusion, we respectfully request your approval of this item with the understanding that the operational needs of all existing Palomar Airport units are prioritized.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Byron Fox with TDA Investment Group. TDA is the, is a fiduciary, a fiduciary for the Construction Laborers Pension Trust for Southern California and serves more than 30,000 union workers. Our mission is to make strategic investments to support their monthly pensions. One of the trust's most important assets is the Carlsbad Jet Center, which is a fixed based operator at the airport. The success, the ongoing success of the Jet Center directly benefits those union workers. So far, we've invested 37, the trust has invested $37 million into the Jet Center. The continued success of the Jet Center is essential. So regarding this morning, TDA is very much in support, very much in support of American Airlines commercial flights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And as the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the final two in-favor speakers, Alan Baldas and Leslie Day.
Good morning, members of the board. I am here today speaking on behalf of the San Diego County Airport Lessise Association to voice our support for restarting commercial airline service at Palomar. Palomar Airport is a vital part of North County, and the new American Airlines service reinforces its importance and the future potential as a regional transportation hub. Palomar Airport is the fifth-largest Tier Two employment center in San Diego region, and commercial service strengthens the economy through job creation. To support these flights, there will need to be new grounds crew, baggage handlers, mechanics, food service, security, and TSA, boarding and ticketing agents, Uber, Lyft, and other grounds transportation services, flight attendants, pilots, and a handful of other new jobs. When considering all the benefits, it's clear that adding commercial flights at Palomar would greatly benefit our community as a whole, and this is, and that's why the county of, San Diego County Airport Lessise Association is in full support of this plan. Thank you very much for your time.
And can you state your name for the record, sir?
Darren Miller.
Thank you.
Hi, Alan Baldas. I live in Carlsbad, also am a pilot. I, first, I want to applaud the opposition in their efforts to gather what appears to be a large number of those opposed to the American Airlines lease request. At this point, I think it was 600, something like that. But North County population is greater than 500,000 people, making that number effectively a rounding error, or perhaps the loud minority. I wish the county would have polled those who in the past had enjoyed commercial service out of Palomar Airport. That survey would have no doubt revealed the true silent majority. Commercial air service available at all, to all of North County is good for all of North County.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. My name is Leslie Day. I'm a pilot. I'm the Vice President of the Gillespie Pilots Association. I want to just reiterate what Jamie Abbott said about the grant assurances. I want to specifically mark the law, the federal law, GA 22A, nondiscrimination. It will make the airport available as an airport for public use on reasonable terms and without unjust discrimination to all types of and classes of aeronautical activities, including commercial aeronautical activities offering services to the public. It is important that all supervisors vote yes for this. It will benefit the public and keep you out of a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll call the speakers in opposition. Again, we'll be calling individuals in groups of three: Stephanie Jackal, Robert Gurman, If you could please come forward and line up at the arrows.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Jackal, and I live in South Vista. I am here to speak in the strongest possible terms against approval of the contract with American Airlines or any airline proposing to fly Category C3 size aircraft. Palomar Airport is a B2 size airport and must remain that. We residents who live in the path of the aircraft already suffer enough with the current airplane overflights. I have asked that a photo of the oranges from my orange tree be given to each of you. This pollution comes from the airplane overflights. This is the air I breathe, the air my neighbors breathe, the air the children at the elementary school up the street breathe. I can't imagine the loads of particulate pollution that will result from the overflights of the Category C size aircraft. This doesn't even begin to address the safety issues of the Category C jets on the B2 Palomar Airport runway.
Here we go again. There we go. You have the handout, Robert Gurman. I just would like to ask the board to bifurcate this agenda item into two parts, simply because both of them are very important and both of them are very different. And then I would like to take the county's own paperwork and go to page seven, and please explain how a departure at 6:15 in the a.m. can arrive in Arizona at 11:50 a.m. for an hour and 20-minute flight? This is a puddle jumper. That's what these are called, are puddle jumpers. So that should throw this whole paperwork into question. And again, put this off for another date until they can get their figures right? Again, is there an FAA representative? Again, I've always asked this. Where's the FAA here? Does the FAA have a rep here to answer our questions or basically be cross-examined? I'm definitely going to run out of time, but their numbers are very suspect. They give no source grants.
Thank you. I'll start calling, I'll call the next three speakers: Hope Nelson, Mary Ann Viney, and Cindy Venolet.
Good morning. My name is Don Betrow. I'm a resident in the city of Carlsbad. I also help coordinate what's called the Palomar Airport Action Network, a group of some 30 HOAs and community groups reaching over 25,000 residents. The case presented by staff report makes it seem like the whole of North County is dependent on the airport. I'm also afraid they're going to come after my firstborn child if they don't get this, this deal. You would think the sky's going to fall. The fact of the matter is, this airport loses money, and they're trying to convince you that going after more FAA money is going to solve that, and you know government money comes with strings and mandates. It also talks about commercial service. Your court order says that this is supposed to be general aviation. We would agree to commuter service, under 40 is what your F44 should be, not over 70. And if only they would work with us, but they've not worked with us on the VNAP. It's just all lip service. We need your help to reject this.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Hope Nelson, past president, Citizens for a Friendly Airport. Want to talk about the American Airlines contract. American Airlines refuses to abide by noise abatement. The first flight out will take off at 6:15 a.m. Daily. What a partner. American Airlines is under no obligation to avoid flight paths over houses or on arrivals or departures. Again, like noise abatement, it's voluntary. There's a 90-day termination clause in the AA contract for both parties. The county is all in with changes to the airport, and they're chipping in up to a half million dollars for the first year. That's according to Jamie Abbott from a month ago. By the way, American Airlines took in $53 billion in revenue in 2023. Regarding the F44, the AA contract conflicts with the F44, which caps the number of seats at 70. AA wants 76 seats, but your own master plan EIR is done for 64 seats. Let's change the F44 to 64, to 64 seats.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mary Ann Viney, Carlsbad. I would like to say to Chairman, Chairwoman Tara, that I absolutely agree with you that absence of evidence is not evidence of abstinence, of absence, and that really applies to Palomar Airport because no EIR was done on this new jet that has more capacity for seating. The old EIR that was done was done with seat capacity of 64 rather than the 76. So we, so that means more air pollution, more noise, more concerns about safety hazards like, you know, like, like the Palomar landfill that is toxic, hazardous, and also has a history of methane leaks and fires. This is also really bad for people.
I'll invite the next three speakers: David Shin, Suzanne Thorley, and Cesar Javier.
My name is Cindy Venoli, and I reside in Carlsbad. A presentation was made at the PAAC where Mr. Abbott intended to explain the VNAP, saying the county manages and monitors the VNAP at McCullin Palomar on a regular basis and strives for highest compliance levels possible. He said it is the residents' responsibility to understand aircraft operations, but the data presented is flawed. Complaints are purposely reported in a watered-down fashion. Planes fly incognito and are unable to be identified and reported. Residents report planes flying dangerously low, and they are not penalized. Residents with suit coating their, their homes are ignored. Concerns about leaded fuel being jettisoned over homes are pushed aside. Planes that depart at 3 a.m. are not responsible for those woken up. Residents are blamed for moving into the area, but many of us have lived here for decades and shouldn't be forced out by an apathetic group of non-residents and ineptly-run airport mired in overreach and grants they accepted. Airport managers are the nexus of communication between the airport and the community. Our airport manager provides dis stains for residents. Why wasn't this put to a vote by Carlsbad?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm David Shin. I live in Carlsbad. I'm a career pilot, combat aviator, carrier pilot, airline pilot, and a jet charter pilot. Do the San Diego Board of Supervisors solicit the airline operations to begin at Palomar? Is this American soliciting the airport? Did the board approach American with a proposal, or did American approach the board? The motive is in question as you have made offers without consideration of public input or without critical examination, and let's not forget previous litigation results. You are allowing operations during quiet hours so American meet their schedule in Phoenix. May I suggest a departure after 7:00 to Dallas or Chicago, where American main hubs are located? You're ignoring concerns of North County residents. You're ignoring for safety, for convenience, safety being capability, the soft runway surface. Flight path, glide slope, proximity path, glide slope proximity to businesses less than a mile from the airport approach and boundary by transport category aircraft.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name's Suzanne Thorly, resident of Carlsbad. I have a few questions. Will the aircraft that leaves at 06:15 be the aircraft that came in the following, the previous evening? If it is going to be ferried in for the 6:15 departure, that's again going to violate the voluntary noise abatement. Why is a new CEQA study not being required? How does the county, has the county been approved for a CUP from Carlsbad yet? Thank you.
Thank you. And Cesar, and then I'll call the final two in-person speakers, Karina Contreras and Jason Haber.
Cesar Javier, victim of ceramic kiln toxicity. This is a case on economic gain versus human and the thing survival. I think you heard it, sir, very, very clearly, versus human and the thing survival. Respectfully, I am not in favor of this continuance of this airport operation, us propagandize for a larger and bigger kind of nuisance, if I may say that. It works then and now. Solution, respectfully, status quo. You have reached the limit. It was approved. You operated in the past, and now, please, don't continue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, supervisors. My name's Karina Contreras. I'm here as a council member in the city of Vista. I had to come here to let you all know that the city of Vista, with its majority, actually passed a resolution, and we are not in favor of moving forward with these commercial flights. You know, I've seen the increase in flights coming out of the airport, and there's a lot of environmental issues that haven't been fixed. There's a lot of superseding with the jurisdiction of Carlsbad, and there hasn't been a lot to help folks around the airport. So I respectfully come here and say, please do not move forward with this. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Jason Haber, and I'm here representing the city of Carlsbad. As the airport's host city with jurisdiction over certain decisions concerning airport land uses, the city is concerned that American Airlines' proposed service at Palomar Airport constitutes an operational expansion that commits the county to an airport design classification that exceeds the current B2 classification. County approval of this item may undermine efforts of the city to make land use decision within its purview and promote compatibility between the airport and local community. We have significant concerns regarding the proposed use of an aircraft that exceeds the operational parameters that are suitable for the airport's B2 classification and appears to be outside the scope of the environmental review conducted for the airport master plan. It's unclear whether future facility improvements triggered by the operational expansion comply with the conditional use permit, and we're concerned that the city of Carlsbad hasn't been asked to make a determination prior to considering this item. We encourage you to continue negotiations to prioritize VNAP compliance, operations that constitute and are consistent with current design class.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should meet their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning. My name is Frank Sung. I'm on the Board of Directors, and I represent the Mariners Point Homeowners Association, 186 homes near the airport. I and many of my neighbors welcome the return of commuter passenger service at Palomar Airport. We are, however, opposed to this particular contract as written. Number one, voluntary quiet hours are being ignored. As previously pointed out, the 6:15 departure is way too early, and when do you think that jet will arrive for the 6:15 departure? There's been no commitment by American Airlines to park it at Palomar Airport overnight. If this contract gets approved, you will not be able to discriminate or deny any other carriers who want to use the airport night or day. Number two, policy F-44 limits the size of the jets that use Palomar. It was put in place for safety, and it was put in place to protect the community. These bigger airplanes do not fit the airport. Net-net, we certainly don't want early morning wake-up calls, and we don't want...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Flying in big planes at 6:15 AM is totally ridiculous in a small city. FAA regs be damned. People need their sleep. American Airlines can't understand this and needs to change the hub where flights connect. And to me, service to Phoenix kind of sounds weird. I don't think that restricting the number of seats is discrimination between any type...
Paul, I don't know if you muted yourself or if you disconnected, but we can't hear you anymore. We'll go to the next caller.
Hello, I'm Dennis Desmond. I'm the president of the Gillespie Pilots Association. I also flew Navy jets for 13 years, American Airlines jets for 31 years. I fully support the airline needs at Palomar Airport. Supervisor Lawson Reamer, I'm in your district. I hope you listen to the majority who want simple, easy access to their local airport. They're the ones who do not want to fight traffic to San Diego, deal with obstruction, congestion, and confusion just to get in long TSA lines. Please vote yes and allow people to vote for you to park across from the terminal, go through a short TSA line, and fly off to connect with the rest of the world. When the commercial jets switch from turbo jets to turbo fans, jet noise dropped dramatically. Embraer jets are modern turbo fans and hot kits. More pollution from one forest fire than our year's worth of jet exhaust, and there's more noise from a Harley-Davidson than an Embraer. I urge the board, and particularly my supervisor, Lawson Reamer, pass the motion and give people traveling choices. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ed Curdwell. I'm a North County resident, and I'm in full support of the American Airlines resuming service to Carlsbad. The Embraer 175 is quieter than the previous jets and turboprops that were serving the airport before. The FAA funds 90% of the infrastructure on county airports, and county is held responsible by the grant assurances to allow services. The bulk of negative comments are by people who knowingly bought cheaper homes near the airport that has been in existence since 1959. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
That was an arrogant caller. Ryan, before you start my time, please note that Paul's, I don't know, if you can go back to his call, please. I hope you guys do that. Give him the right to speak. Anyways, so that's all I have to say about that. But yeah, just regarding the whole, the lady who spoke in favor to keep you out of a lawsuit, she said that's a threat. And due to that cheap, weak attempt to strong-arm the board into submission with that threat, I will most definitely be siding with my North County neighbors in opposition. And a huge thank you to Robert Gurman, who has been relentless in his efforts regarding airport issues, bringing awareness of what's been happening. You, Sir Robert Gurman, are a rock star. Keep standing for what is right, North County. Reminder, government will do whatever they are told to do by the ones pulling the strings. In short, they don't work for the people. Please, I urge you, start researching the UN Agenda 21.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Taylor here. Hey, how you guys doing? Here's another problem that you guys created because you tailored your thing. Here's the deal. You guys turned off horns on trains because you wanted people to flee, even though they thought their location right next to the train, knowing that the horn is honked for a safety reason. You got rid of that safety reason for because you wanted to increase the property value of that house. Well, you removed commercial airlines from that airport, and now a bunch of people are flying jet or planes with lead in the fuel, which I thought a long time ago, we thought lead was a bad thing because they made people more angry. They made people more crazy. But apparently, you don't care about the mental state of people because you allow Palomar Airport to...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Truth destroying allegedly poor people's quality of life with jumbo jets over their homes at 6:15 in the morning to benefit the rich majority. Big corporations like American Airlines is in outrage. Takeoff noise is not the same as flyover noise. Both the county and the FAA have refused to enforce noise pollution standards. With all the finger pointing, how is this any different than the sewage crisis? I say deny, then let American Airlines or the FAA sue about this, then file a counter suit, because apparently, the county's got $10 million to blow because of two different disgraced supervisors requiring elections. What is this item and all items really about? Just like it says, maximize the return on investments. There's $1.4 million to be made. But wait, I thought the official narrative was that gas emissions are bad, yet the county and federal government are incentivizing air travel. It's been so short a meeting pair of the tyrant didn't really have to work to earn that $300,000 a year, right? That's the rigged system, Monica Love. Have a good day, Pilot Jim.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Man, you guys are always selling people out just to do business. It's pretty funny because like, what happened to your environmental god that you want to, you know, worship and act like, we got to protect the planet, but not if we have money to make? And who really cares if these people's health is in danger, or they're going to be disturbed by the noise? I mean, it's just, it's funny because it's like, eventually, then maybe you'll do a study and see the problems that come with it and like, the health effects of the people. I mean, all you have to do is ask Robert Gurman, because he's been telling you for a very long time. And what was going to happen if there's a plane that crashes into those neighborhoods? That's going to be pretty scary, right? I mean, but I guess you'll just address it when it comes. Who really cares about the safety and what people think, right? When there's business to do, because that's all that really matters. So this is going to be put through because you guys, you know, you need to make your money, but you can't listen to your constituents. And even if you have a mass number that are going to say, no, we don't want it, you guys do it anyway. Good for you, because you're super positioned.
Thank you. Your time is up. And we're going to go back to you, Paul, and you have about 22 seconds left on your time.
Thank you. Paul Bowe here. I do not think that restricting the number of seats is discrimination between any type, kind, or class of aeronautical activity. This is silly excuse. Do we really want 100 seater at the airport? No, and the reason is safety. Board wants no wait or seat limit or...
Thank you. And your time is up. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, but I want to be respectful for my colleague who put his name up first. But I will have a whole bunch of questions for staff, so. Okay, thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I appreciate it. I was very disturbed by this presentation. I want to make sure I completely understand what you're trying to tell us. So you're telling us there's some kind of very big top-line number of amount of money that we would very likely lose if we don't approve this, this board letter, if we don't move forward with this lease. So can you unpack that a little bit more? I mean, my understanding was that, yeah, there might be a lawsuit, but we could probably win it. But you're, it sounds like you're telling us that we would lose it. I just want to better understand. I feel like we're being threatened.
Can you hear me? Very good. Supervisor, I'll answer that question for you.
A little louder, if you wouldn't mind.
Let me get closer to the microphone. My voice is a little bit low. If the board were to vote to deny the lease, this could expose the county to significant legal risk that the county could be found by the FAA to have improperly denied access to the airport facilities in violation of Federal Grant Assurance 22. So if a violation of the grant assurances is found by the FAA, the FAA may order all future FAA funding for not just Palomar Airport, but for the whole county airport system be withheld until the violation is resolved. So that's what staff was trying to communicate in the presentation, is that there's a significant risk to federal funding if a decision not to approve this lease is made.
And there were a couple of different numbers in that presentation. So what's the total amount, top line, that could be at risk?
Supervisor, we did include some numbers in the presentation. Wanted to convey how much the FAA has invested in county airports. That was about $123 million in the last 25 years, and then about $53 million just at Palomar alone. So, you know, we wanted to convey that FAA has really invested in county airports, you know, especially Palomar. You know, we looked at what we would have to fund out of the AEF should the FAA stop funding for county airports, and it's about $5 million a year out of the AEF to cover what we wouldn't receive from FAA. And that's, you know, we've, FAA is good right now, but that would really wipe out the AEF in a matter of a few years.
So $5 million a year, and what about that $150 million? Would they be able to take that back or claw that back?
You know, there's a chance that FAA can ask for reimbursement of some grant funds that were used to maintain facilities at the airport, like taxiways and so forth. So, you know, we do need to mention that there's a chance that FAA could ask for repayment of those, of those grants for the payment improvements.
And I feel like what I'm hearing is that we could get sued either way. So like, if we move forward with this, we could get sued by, you know, citizen groups and the city of Carlsbad. I mean, I think we did already lose a lawsuit along those grounds. If we don't move forward, this, we could get sued by the FAA. And so it feels like we're between, both, both paths present possibilities of risks of lawsuits. So I guess I want to better understand why you think that the risk of lawsuit coming from the FAA is so much more sort of severe, because you didn't mention this risk of lawsuits from like, citizen groups or the city of Carlsbad.
The lawsuit from the citizens group was resolved years ago. After, after, after a decision from the court, it was a lawsuit over the scope of the county's PEIR for the master plan. That environmental document provides coverage for the action that your board is being asked to take today. The time to appeal that lawsuit or to challenge the decision in that lawsuit has long since expired, and it is staff's view, after comparing the PEIR to the action today, that the action today is covered by the environmental document.
And what about, I mean, so what if we have a risk of lawsuit from the FAA? Is there any like, yeah, I just want to understand, is this a real risk? Like, is there any real? I know you cited two cases, but like, how serious is this risk?
It is a real risk. Just last month, we saw the city of Los Angeles face a corrective action plan from the FAA threatening to withhold funding not only for Van Nuys Airport, but for LAX as well, if the city didn't reverse a denial of a lease decision, very similar to the one we're facing here. That, that matter ultimately wasn't... That matter ultimately wasn't published by the FAA because the city of LA settled it. But a similar case involving the Santa Monica Airport was taken to a final decision by the FAA, and ultimately, the city found itself in a position where it couldn't restrict CND aircraft. So in our example here, American is proposing to fly the Embraer 175, which is a C3 aircraft, into a B2 airport. Those are the same facts that we saw in the city of Santa Monica. And then another case that was very, very directly on point, Grayson versus DeKalb County, Georgia, FAA docket number 160513. Similar circumstance, a county airport sponsor decided to try to restrict airport access by denying a lease agreement, and the FAA found that would be a violation of Grant Assurance 22. So my point is that when you compare the risk of liability from a citizen's suit over a SEQA decision that's long since been resolved versus the risk of a grant assurance violation under circumstances where the FAA, less than a month ago, in December of last year, found that a local airport sponsor was in violation of Grant Assurance 22, under facts very similar to ours, we think that those risks weighed in favor of focusing on the grant assurance issue in the staff presentation.
Okay. Let me, thank you, appreciate that. Let me switch gears a little bit. I had a couple of other questions. So, you know, one thing I hear, I've heard a lot from people in my community is about the noise and, you know, whether, especially before 7:00 in the morning, we have these voluntary noise abatement guidelines, but they're voluntary, as is evidenced by the fact that they start at 7:00, and this is for 6:15, so that's in violation. What would it take to gather more data or to petition? Like, how could we possibly get these to be mandatory? Is there, what would that path look like? What kind of, what could we as a county do to move towards mandatory, like, in terms of data collection, petition the FAA, et cetera?
Sure. Supervisor, what we can do, and what is under our control, is to get more data through additional noise microphones to actually capture the noise that aircraft create. You know, we have a foundation of four noise monitors currently, which covers all four quadrants of the airport. We're in the process of installing two more this year, but maybe additional monitors to gather data to better understand and see if we do have a problem in certain areas. And so that's something that we're, we can do under our control. Speaking to the voluntary program, you know, we asked the FAA a couple times for mandatory restrictions, and they denied both of those. So what we want to do is do what we can under our authority, gather more data, bolster up our VNA outreach and communication to pilots and so forth. All those things that we can do under our control, we're more than willing to do that.
So a question for you all, regardless of what happens here today, either way, it seems like we should do that. So would you need a motion from me, or is this something you guys can just work on and maybe report back and, you know, by the end of the year with sort of having installed a bunch more monitors, worked with the community, and gathered more data, and repetition the FAA for a mandatory program? And maybe, you know, I know there's other airports that you potentially have best practices we could learn from. So is that something, it means, would you need a board motion, or is that something you guys are already working? Could you just work on that and come back with like, go put those air monitors, those noise monitors in? Go gather that data, go talk to other jurisdictions, and see if we can get, move this voluntary to a mandatory program?
Supervisor, no formal motion from the board is needed to do those things. We can, staff can kind of take this and run with it, and then come back, like you said, maybe in a year, and say, "Here's what we found." It takes a little bit to establish new monitors because you have to place them, and there's some logistics there. So it takes a little time, but more than happy to come back to the board and kind of report what we found. And if there's next steps that can be taken, we'll do those.
I would, regardless of what we do today, that would be great. I mean, you know, maybe by the end of 2025, come back with a plan, having gathered, put those noise monitors in place, gathered more data, looked at other best practices, and say, "Okay, now can we move forward to try to get mandatory noise abatement in place with the FAA?" Because obviously voluntary is voluntary, which means people ignore it.
Right. Supervisor, we can definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just had a question. One of the public comments asked, like, they had an interesting point, a thank you to our public commenter. I know some people think we're not always listening, we are listening. They said, "Why is it leaving at 6:15 and then it lands in Phoenix at 11:50? It's a puddle jumper." Could someone help me out here? That was an excellent question from a person, a public comment.
Yeah, Supervisor, that's an interesting perspective. The times that we posted on our presentation were the arrivals back to Palomar. So I didn't include the arrivals to Phoenix. So the 6:15 a.m. departure out of Palomar, it returns to Palomar at 11:00 to take passengers back to Phoenix at 12:35.
Oh, that makes a lot more sense of why, 6:15, why you'd have landed in Phoenix at 11:50. Thank you. That was helpful. Okay, I am very, I'll be honest, I'm pretty upset right now. I feel like the whole principle of democracy is that we should have the power and the authority to make decisions locally about what's in the best interest of our community. Carlsbad is my community, and, you know, there's a lot of concerns about making sure that we're not impacting the quality of life, you know, environmental concerns, but noise concerns. And, you know, there's a lot of weighing and balancing, and I know that there's also some members of the community who would like to have, you know, more local flights that they could utilize. But I think there's certainly a way forward that we could meet the, address and protect the needs of our community in terms of real, real significant concerns about noise and environmental impacts while also making sure that we're, you know, providing more opportunities to access flights. If we had more freedom locally to like, make these decisions and make these trade-offs. And I feel like we're basically have a gun to our head with the FAA saying, "Take this deal," or we're going to take like, something, I don't know, somewhere between $5 million and $150 million of your money and sue you. And that's kind of where I think we're at, and I'm mad. I'll stop. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, ma'am. I got a question, then it's a comment, and then I'll make a motion. Question is, some of the speakers commented on the SEQA that was done during the master plan and how that covers what we're doing or what's before us today. Has that been addressed, or are we covered? What's the status there?
I can address it. So in conjunction with the approval of the master plan, we did a program environmental impact report.
Say that again, I can barely hear you.
So in conjunction with the approval of the master plan for Palomar Airport, a program environmental impact report was done. A program environmental impact report is a document that kind of looks at impacts programmatically over time. And so what happened is the, in conjunction with the master plan, we were looking at kind of forecasted activity into the future. And what that master plan did is said, "Well, we anticipate that there could be up to 500,000 enplanements of folks using commercial service through the airport." And then it looked at the environmental impacts of that, things like traffic, noise, all the things that you would look at in a normal EIR. And so we took that environmental document, the review that was done, and compared it to the action that we have before us. The action before us is two flights a day, less than 10% of enplanements until over a year of what was reviewed and approved as part of the master plan. And so the determination by staff was that this project is within the scope of the PEIR, and so therefore, no additional environmental review is required.
Okay. Well, thank you because it was brought up a couple of times here. So first of all, I want to thank the Department of Public Works and the Airport Division for getting to this point. I'm glad to see commercial service coming to North County and returning to North County. It was there for many years in the 1990s. I know I used to fly out of, and take flights up to Los Angeles, out of Palomar. And I know, but there are concerns, legitimate concerns by the residents about increased noise. And that's legit. The problem, not the problem, but what we're up against here, the Embraer 175 is actually quieter than some of the business jets that already operate out of Palomar 24/7. So it's actually quieter than some of those older business jets that are out there flying. And they can operate 24/7 at the airport. So the Embraer is actually a little bit quieter than some of those aircraft. And as an FAA grant-funded airport, we're bound by federal grant assurances to make the airport facilities to open to all types of aviation users, including commercial users, as somebody had mentioned. We already have a terminal. We already have a ramp area. We already have the facilities built for this type of service, and it's not being utilized. It was in the 1990s, and I think into the 2000s as well. So it would be considered discriminatory for us not to approve without a qualifying safety or administrative reason, for which there is no safety reasons or administrative reasons. And these planes, you know, back to the noise, they're actually quieter than the turboprops. And when Delta, United, American, they were all flying out of Palomar, and they were using the turboprops, which are noisier than these Embraers that they're proposing. And the Embraer climbs faster, gets away faster, and has less of a noise footprint on the ground once that thing gets airborne. So there's really no grounds for us to justify denying them a lease since we've already got that same type of aircraft operating out of there 24/7. And the voluntary noise abatement program unfortunately is voluntary. And, you know, should we vote to deny, we have a significant level of legal grounds that the FAA has come in and sued other entities who have essentially discriminated against operations at their airports, and they've lost every time. The FAA wins on these things. So we'd probably most likely have to pay the full cost for defense of that and putting, you know, taxpayer dollars at risk. So as I understand in our state law, we're simply required to enter into the lease agreement for the use of county property. That's all we're doing today, is a use of county property. So with all that in mind, and I'm glad to hear that Jamie and our Department of Airports, you know, can work on mitigating some of the noises that's already out there and exist. I actually was one of the lead people when we came up with the voluntary noise abatement program for the departures. We had one for arrivals, but I helped make, we were trying to keep airplanes over roads, over industrial areas, not over neighborhoods as a standard way to access into the airport. But unfortunately, the FAA, because safety is their number one priority, they will direct and divert and have people fly over neighborhoods to sequence and prioritizing safety, getting in and out of Palomar Airport. So I'd like to move the recommendations, 1, 2, 3, and 4A of this item.
Sir, any motions on this?
I have a motion.
That was your motion? Second, sorry.
Did you second it?
No.
I'll second. I want to begin on 2.
Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Yeah, I'm going to support that. I'm very mad. I don't have to say. I feel like we have a gun to our head, but, okay. Have to call the vote, so please, thank you. Thank you. Could we please move forward with the vote?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night.
Okay. Thank you all. Non-agenda public comment. We don't have any, no one called in? No one else called in? Is that right, Ryan?
That's correct, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We were only able to take four virtual callers because no other signed-up participants called in, so we do not need to go back to non-agenda public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So then this meeting will be adjourned. This concludes the business before the board today. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. And the next regular meeting of the board will take place on Tuesday, January 28th at 9:00 a.m.